And to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under us and with its liberty and justice.
All right, we will start with public comment. First up is Amanda Montgomery.
Amanda. I don't have anything to say except that I came with my daughter because we were at the color run and I was super disappointed with the planning of this. I'm late in this. I understand that we have a superintendent that's leaving, but we have a lot of moving parts that we need to consider. I'm one of those things of public and we had a lot of people at the color run. And so I'm bringing my daughter here who has an MRI schedule for tomorrow and we need to go. We need something. I'm not very happy with you guys at the moment. I'm a people want. I'm also super excited to learn that my daughter's classroom is going to be a combined classroom. I learned that yesterday, no, actually today with first and kindergarten. This means for five guys, they're both guys. We need to be able to provide her for our kids.
Thank you. Amanda, next up is Kelly Fenske.
Hi, I was here last evening. Still a member of the community, but not a parent of a child in the district because of the way that the district is handling things. First, I'd like to say that I'm disappointed also and the lack of consideration that the public, this community that has organized the fundraiser for our school district, is not available to be here. Eight hundred possibly members can't come because of what you guys said with it. And I would like to say thank you to the one board member here, one, that cares enough to respond to community comments and email regarding budgets. I'd also like clarification on what you guys do plan to discuss in the post session. Because there are rules against what you guys can and cannot discuss in a post session based on the open competing path. And I know that you guys are dyslexic to bring in that search, but I would just like to remind you that if there's anything discussed in a post session that is against policy, that is against the law, that you guys will be held violation. And that includes increased compensation for any existing employees. I think I have that right. And I think that's all. But thank you, Julie, for responding to my email and disappointed and the rest of you for not caring enough about community comments to acknowledge them.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to discussion. Okay, so this is, I don't have a lot of formal discussion. We need to figure out what we're going to do for June 30th is going to be coming very quickly. That is Dr. Cohen's last day. So it's my, in my belief that I don't, I don't think we can complete a search anywhere near in enough time. So we're gonna have to go the interim route, but I want the board feedback on that to identify if that's what the consensus is. Then we can move forward with next steps, but kind of go around the room and figure out what those are so we can start planning those things. Thoughts? Jim, sorry, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine. Is this thing on? Kelly, can you hear me okay? Looking for a thumbs up or perfect. Okay, thank you. Finding a superintendent at this point is like finding a starting quarterback after preseason is over or starting pitcher after spring training. The process is long and involved to try to find the right type of candidate for our district. From there, applications are turned in. Interviews take a long time, but all of that process is generally wrapped up by approximately March. I think we have to go the interim route. I think we owe it to the district to take our time in finding the next permanent candidate. And we owe that to our families. And I don't like rushed decisions, but quite honestly, we need an interim because we've got too many things going on. But unless we address how and why this even happened, nothing's going to really get settled and we will continue to have a problem in this district moving forward. As including looking for new candidates. So there you go.
I agree with Jim of looking for, because we have to pick a search firm, right? But it'll be a discussion as well.
Yep.
Yeah, and I would say we go with a search term or whatever we so choose why. But I think we need to take our time.
Perfect, okay.
All right, so before, we need to discuss. We're gonna talk about our internal candidates first before if we're gonna have a discussion about any of this, we need, we need to talk about, do we want to pick some internal candidates, right? And then move on forward with, you know, whether or not we need to look for a search firm. And I think we have candidates that are, we're talking about. And that's where a close session will come in. If our board agrees to talking about some of our internal candidates, please.
Okay.
So, so just so everybody understands, I believe what Anna is talking about right now is we have, correct me if I'm wrong, three internal employees right now that have the endorsement for superintendent that would qualify for this position interim or, or otherwise, and that is Dr. Shaw, Dr. Johnson, and Dr. Roland Knight. Is that right?
My understanding is.
Kelly, can you hear me?
No.
No, I am. Okay. I, I think that yes, we owe the, the, the schools and the community, the teachers, all involved. The proper assessment of what we, and, and the time it takes. I think that we should immediately look to starting the process of hiring a search firm. I think Dr. White has a firm and IASB has a firm, people that we have relied on in the past. I, I think that we can come to a quick conclusion on who to move forward with, and I think we do that in short order and start that search. I'm, I'm not opposed to interim, especially because June 30th is, is right around the corner. Dr. Cohen had mentioned when I was in, in the building the other day that he will be taking the last week off. So it's my understanding, it's actually a little shorter than June 30th, but we can, that can be subject to check. I, but I think we go down that road quickly, get the process started and obviously we'll need an interim until we get through that process. But we have to work on parallel tracks. And as, as far as Jim's comment about addressing why this happened, I'm, I'm not sure that you know, what, what the thoughts are on that. I did sit and talk with, with Mark on that. We've had superintendents leave in, in the past. And, you know, I, I'm not sure what, what that comment was meant, meant to address. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty darn tired of the mudslinging and everything and I want, I want to get down to business. Hire somebody and, and get the work done. So if you want to have those conversations about pointing fingers and mudslinging and keep going around and around and around on this, my door is always open. Let's, let's get it done and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, Sam, thoughts?
I think I agree with Jim at this point, it being literally the last day of school for our current district. If we were to try and find a brand new person to replace, we are probably searching for somebody that for some reason isn't currently employed. So we need to go down the interim route for now and spend some time trying to find a replacement with some time to spend on that.
Okay, you, Kelly.
Okay, so I have a few thoughts. Can you hear, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I don't at this point have enough information to rule out that it is not a possibility to find a permanent placement for a superintendent to certainly to Julie's point, we need some kind of interim in the short term, but I do not have enough information to rule out the possibility of finding a permanent placement for a, you know, for August. Having said that, if that's true, you guys are more experienced. I'm with, this is now, I believe, our third superintendent that we've had to turn, you know, turnover in the past four to five years or maybe seven. Anyhow, you guys, you guys have been down this road and I'll trust that. Replacement.
Kelly, you froze.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. You, you broke up about where we kind of four board members have had experience with.
Yeah, so I just, I just am saying like, I don't have enough information to say personally that I feel comfortable saying it is impossible at this point to find somebody to fill the position for the school year. I, I don't know that that is impossible. But I would support hiring and finding a interim to cover the 24, 25 school year and have a community involved wider scope project of, of interviewing and finding a, a good candidate for a more permanent placement. Having said that, I, I would want to support looking at all potential interim candidates, internal and external. And I just want to let everybody on the board know that I've, I've asked the question, you know, if that suggestion would be something that people could interpret as a slight to our internal candidates. It's not meant to be a slight to our internal candidates. It's meant to just make sure we have all appropriate candidates on the table and then we can evaluate, you know. There, there's going to be a hole if we have an internal candidate filled, filled this position. So I just want to make sure we look at all avenues for an interim.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Historically, I, I think that sitting here at the end of May, it's going to be very difficult. The interims, you know, are usually retired superintendents from the experience and they pretty much already have stuff lined up. With that said, we can reach out to Don White's firm, we can reach out to IASB, we might find a diamond in the rough. That's just out there, but we're, I think we're probably looking at an interim. The good thing on the timing of it though, from search, everything that I know about searches is that you always want to be the first one out, out the gate in, in the fall because you get the best candidates that are out there. If you go in December and January, you tend to get, you know, the, the cream of the crop gets selected in the first round, which is the fall, September, October time period. And then people that don't get picked them, put their name in the hat for the next round that are usually in like the December, January time period. And then you get people in March or it's kind of like they just kind of go downstream. So I think the advantage of us, you know, we should get the best candidates by doing it in the fall if, if we have to go down that route. So with that said, for next steps, because we have to move quickly, does someone want to take the lead with reaching out to Don, Don White's firm?
Because I, I did speak with Dr. White yesterday.
Okay. Well, this is good. We might have to divide and conquer because we, we need to move quick on some of this stuff. So because here's the other thing too, like, I mean, if, if you think about, we're sitting here at the end of May, you got to figure out the search firm. You got to figure out which one we're going to potentially use, the fee that's going to cost. Then you got to put a profile out there. Then you got to sit there and say, okay, now it's another two weeks for open up candidates to apply. Then you got to bring them into interview. How many candidates you get? A lot of times the superintendent, there's two rounds. So we're talking, this could get, you know, so those are discussions for probably next week or the week after is what do we do in the interim if we can't even get an interim or, you know.
And let me just let everybody know, when I did speak to Dr. White yesterday, he did say, when, back when we were looking for candidate, when, before Dr. Cohen came aboard, the applications were coming in thirty, forty. Said the last few years, it's been ten applications and we're lucky, they're lucky they get five candidates that, you know, are worth interviewing. So it's, it's just been really, we're keeping wanting to take this position. So.
Anna, can I jump in there? I did happen to talk to the IASB the other day on a different topic and, and they told me they have, they have people in their pool ready to, ready to go. So that pool is available and, and there are people waiting. So I know that from the director of IASB as of this week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the other one, IASB, does someone want to? Okay.
Does everyone already know?
Yeah. I believe there are two names that I can give you that to start with.
I have a good one, Laurie Grant and Natalie.
Got it. And Natalie's.
I can't hear Julie. Julie's mic isn't working.
Sorry, Kelly, I turned it off. I said I have a good relationship with Laurie Grant and Dr. Natalie, but Eric has additional names as well that I'll reach out to.
Okay.
I've had a couple of people reach out to me just after the announcement too on some other, you know, people in, in different school districts. So I just want to, you know, maybe, maybe there might be some possibility on that too. I'll let you guys know.
Got it. Okay. All right, so I, I know there are other search firms out there. I just can't think of them off the top of my head. And I was trying to look through all my notes from the last time when we did the search that resulted in Dr. Cohen, because I know we, there was like five or six that we picked from. I couldn't find my notes. I don't think I know set notes or of what else.
Quick question on that. Do, do you have the contract for that? Because typically when there's a placement agency that we are paying to make a placement, there's a minimum term that they, they are guaranteeing that we stay. Are we confident that it's less than three years that was in that contract?
Um, I'd have to go back and look.
It's worth, it's worth a check just to see.
Yeah, I believe, I believe Mike Everett was the president. Maybe he might, I can reach out to Mike too, to see if he was, uh, he would have been leading the firm or the search at that point in time. So all right, well, I, I think if we start with those two firms, see where they lead. I think that's good. All right, so we have, we have three candidates that are certified internally. It doesn't necessarily mean that they are, you know, want to put their name or put their hat, their name in the hat. So I can reach out to those three internal candidates.
I'm, I was just curious if anybody has already done that in any way, either reached out or any candidates said anything.
Yes, one candidate has reached out of, of, of that, of that group. Dr. Roland Knight has reached out on that front.
I didn't hear. He said Dr. Roland Knight.
Yes. Now that's nothing, nothing formal. So I don't know, I don't know if that means that, you know, it had, it, yeah, we have to go down that route. So, okay, all righty, perfect. So I guess, you know, one of the things about meeting tonight is that if we could start, you know, it's, it's Memorial Day weekend. So if we can get these communications hopefully started tomorrow before people start leaving or maybe even it's going to be late tonight potentially when we get done, but to start, you know, getting these out because my guess is we're gonna have to meet probably sometime next week to discuss the results of what the firms, both these firms said, IASB and Don White, and then also if they're, you know, the, the internal candidates, you know. We might have all three that are interested. We might have none. So we got to go with that. So that's where we need to be diligent and try to get that going on next week.
As long as we're talking about that, I would like to suggest we keep with a Wednesday night format for the board meetings because that's when we normally have it. Generically seven o'clock, just so it's kind of on the normal radar. It's not different.
Next Wednesday don't work because we have negotiations.
Okay.
And it's late night.
Okay.
I didn't hear, I can't hear Lisa.
We have negotiations next Wednesday and it's going to be a later one.
I was trying to make a general suggestion and make that come soon.
Okay.
Five thirty. What's that?
I can't hear Eric.
Five thirty, seven thirty is negotiations on Wednesday. Okay. Uh, any other days next week that would?
I'll be Monday day. Tuesday is my fourth day.
That, that, yeah, no, that's what, yeah, that's.
And I can make it work, but I don't think you can.
Well, Monday's normally one of them.
I'll do any day, so you guys pick.
So I'll open it up that I can't do Wednesday because of bargaining, but otherwise Monday through Thursday, well, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, I guess then. I would be available for any time after six.
Are you guys talking about Labor Day, Monday?
Well, Memorial Day, but you're right, not Monday. So Tuesday or Thursday after six, I'm good.
Memorial Day. Yeah, we don't want to do it on Memorial Day.
All right, I mean.
Anna, if we do it like five thirty, if we did it early, would that be okay for Tuesday, five thirty?
I can't do five thirty. I can't do that early. Six is the earliest we can do.
Six?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would prefer Wednesday because we got to get moving. I know, I know negotiations go five thirty. Could we do another eight o'clock?
I'm fine with that.
Start time.
Yeah, negotiations is over at seven thirty, so I could make it work.
Yeah.
Just, I mean.
If there's food sitting here, I can definitely make it work.
This point.
Yeah, I like whatever we had at the last board meeting.
At this point, every day counts and it's huge. So if we can do, I mean, at that point in time, we're, we're going to come back with, you know, if internal candidates are interested and also, you know, if Don White's firm or IASB has, you know, if IASB supposedly has a list of candidates, then you know, that helps out tremendously because then we don't necessarily need to, well, we'd start to post, I guess, but
Yeah.
if they have names, we can be certain to interview why. Well, why other people are out there.
I, I got two points on that. If they're in the pool and they're ready to go, why didn't they already get snatched up? Just a thought. Second. Well, I'm just, but other districts have these needs too. I'm just saying, last people on the dance floor, who knows why. And as part of the general interview process, we generally host nights where people from the community can meet these people and be part of the selection process. I think that's a valid point that we have done every time since I've been a part of it. And I think that that's important to keep in mind as we do this process.
So the only other thing I would mention that on the, if, if we go the retired superintendent interim is that retired superintendent is going to work 120 days to be eligible for their pension. So what a lot of districts I'm hearing are doing right now is they're actually going to two retired superintendents, so their, their interims are two, and they basically will work, one, one will work two, three, maybe four weeks, and then you transition to the other one, two to four weeks, and then they go, they kind of, they don't do every other day. There's no continuity with that, but you do, they, they come with some sort of agreement, whether it's two or three weeks, and then they just kind of just keep rotating. And that's what they've been doing. So just keep that in mind that anyone that's retired can only work 120 days. They can still keep their pension. So interesting concept that, that I think the last time we, we did this, that wasn't out there, this whole dual double interim type thing. It was kind of, kind of crazy, but, but hey, it is what it is. We can hear you now.
So I, I just want to add something to that. I, I agree, Eric, that that's kind of like, yeah, my understanding of kind of the way it's done now. But what's interesting is just in a quick cost analysis, even on an internal candidate, it seems like potentially two co-interim superintendents might, might on the surface sound more costly, but just brief round numbers, it, it doesn't seem to be the case. So I do think it's worth exploring.
For what's worth, any of the internal candidates, money is not even being discussed at this point and depending on the person and the track they are on, it wouldn't make any effect on their current income at all because that would throw off other things. So as we're trying to be mindful of money and everything else, we should be reminded that two of the three candidates are on that kind of the possibilities, people that have the correct licenses, they have those things going on. So that would not increase cost to the district. Just so we're aware of that.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion on superintendent search? Got a lot of homework. We're going to come back eight PM. Yeah, I don't know. I, I think we, I, I don't know. It's my opinion that we got, we got to move.
I could definitely do five twenty nine at eight. Wait, let me rephrase. I can do five twenty nine at eight if we order pizza.
Subtle, not subtle.
For the teachers that are already here that would like to stick around after their meeting, because this is a valid and important process, I'm sure there'll be enough to share. How does that sound? Night.
Okay, all right. So we're going to tentatively schedule that for right now. Okay, anything else on the superintendent search? Okay, and I make a motion that we go to closed session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to local government wage increase transparency act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act.
Second. Give it to Jim.
All right, second, any discuss, any discussion?
But just make it clear that. Just make it clear that we're discussing the compensation and, and the the specific piece of this that you just read over and why we're going into closed session. There's been questions that have been submitted about that. So we're, we're speaking about a specific employee and any compensation related to that. I'm, I'm just trying to address some of the concerns that I have heard today and in email that we read a statement and we don't specify what we're talking about. All I'm trying, I'm not implying anything other than trying to pick what piece of this we're going to, to be utilizing to go into closed session.
I didn't, I didn't hear, Jim, can you repeat what you said in the microphone? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I, I was asking the question and, and I was trying to figure out why we were taking the, the path with, with the compensation dialogue. That's not really what's going on.
Wait, I don't, I don't understand. We, we should be disclosing why we're going into closed session. And you just, Eric, you just recited an exemption only, right? Was it just one exemption?
We're going to closed session, talk about Dr. Cohen. That's plain and simple, done. We're not gonna go into details about what we're gonna talk about, but it is Dr. Cohen. So that's answers questions. Okay, we have first, the second, any other discussion? Okay, I think these go over.
Mr. Andreessen. This is Briscoe. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Oost. Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski.
Thank you.
Eric, do you want to call me on your cell?